Good evening and welcome to the regular Rosemount City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. First of all, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
So if there are no changes, anyone wish to move a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The agenda is adopted. We'll now move to presentations and we have one listed tonight, which is a food truck festival. And I'll turn this over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Schoach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd just like to remind everyone that we have the Fall Food Truck Fest coming up. The date is September 18th. The event will be held out here at Central Park, in the parking lot area, the pleasure rink, and then also the van show. We're gonna have three musical acts that evening. You've got the Music Junkies from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have Steve Daley from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00. And then we'll end the night with a band called Bootleg, and they will play from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have a variety of tastes from several food trucks from the area. We'll also have beer being sold by Celts of Rosemount. If anyone has any information, they can definitely call the Parks and Recreation Department, or they can go to the city's Facebook page, or check the city out online. I will say that right now, the plan is to have 18 food trucks. We had 17 back in 2019, but it seems to change day by day. We get one, we lose one, we get one, we lose one, but we'll have a great event. We've had great crowds in the past, and we're thinking about the same thing again for this year. So, you know, cross your fingers for great weather, and we'll have another great event.
So the city sponsored and it's free? The music, everything?
Yep. We do have a cash machine, so bring money, or get it here.
But food is not free.
The food is not free. You are correct on that. The music, and using the indoor restrooms is free, but the food and the beverages, you have to pay for it.
So with that, thank you. We will work on the weather. All right.
Two weeks.
That concludes presentations. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on an item, question, statement, may do so at this time. Podium is now open. And online, do we have anyone raising their hand?
We do not, but we do have participants online. If you just want to wait a moment.
Okay. Thank you. So if there are no public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items any council member would like to pull?
Six E.
Six E. Anyone else?
No.
If not, would you wish to move a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda items A through H with six E removed for further discussion.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, please take your roll.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Droste.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes all items except six E, which is donation acceptance, Will's movie night. And I'll turn this over, Councilmember Block.
I just actually, and if Chief Dahlstrom wants to talk a little bit about it, I pulled this for two reasons. Number one, we all need good news these days, so this is one of those good news items. And number two, I think this young man deserves a little bit of an applause for his unselfish endeavor here, so I'll let Chief talk a little bit about this one.
Absolutely. So we met Little Will. It was a surprise to us. We got invited to his movie night in the neighborhood. So he was looking to do something for fun with his friends and neighbors, and he hosted an outdoor movie event. He had snacks and popcorn, all kinds of things for sale. So everybody got to go over and watch Zootopia. And so the first night, it got rained out, but then they rescheduled and they continued to host it. And he raised, this year that he raised $250, and lucky for our police department, we were the benefactor. So he came in with his mother and he got a little, a few gifts from us in return, some RPD swag and City of Rosemount swag. But they, his mother and father are both service members. I don't recall exactly which branch of the military that they served in, but they've started this initiative with them a couple of years ago, and he actually raised money the first time for a K-9 foundation, I believe works with, it's either Wounded Warriors or somebody that, people that have been wounded in action. So he's a great little kid, super energetic, huge smile, and it was a great neighborhood event, and we were just happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Will, if you're out there watching.
Yes, thank you, Will.
So with that, if you would like to move a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept donation, the amount of $250 from a resident in Rosemount to be utilized for officer wellness programming.
I'll second.
We have a motion? On the floor, Councilmember Block, second. Councilmember Fresky, any final comments? And seeing none, please take your roll.
Block.
Aye.
Droste.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes item six E and all items under the consent agenda. So we do not have any public hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. We have one item before us this evening, which is 21.27 PUD and request by Maplewood Development for a preliminary plat and a PUD master development plan with rezoning for Amber Fields. And with that, I'll turn this over to our senior planner, Mr. Klett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am excited tonight to bring forward a recommendation from the planning commission for the initial development phase within the Umore project, and this would be a new plat called Amber Fields. And if the council wouldn't mind, I'd like to go through the presentation I made for the planning commission, maybe condensing it a little bit and leaving more time for questions and answers on this one. But it is a fairly significant project, something that gets worse spending a little bit of time going through and discussing the details of the project, and then again leaving some time for questions. There are representatives of the development team here, both from Maplewood Homes and from Alliance Engineering, if there are questions of those individuals as well. So just to summarize quickly, the council's asked to consider a request from Maplewood Home offering Amber Fields, which would include a preliminary plat, which should be an overall outlot plat for the entire subdivision, and then a master PUD development plan with rezoning, which would establish the base PUD zoning for the property and an overall development concept and plan that would be used for determining compliance with the PUD for future approvals. The planning commission conducted public hearings on this matter at its July 27th and August 24th meetings, due partly to the size of the project and the desire to make sure that residents had ample opportunity to learn about the plans and speak before the commission, and is recommending approval of both, of all the requests that are in front of the council tonight. So just to get us oriented, the proposed PUD area is the area that's shown in the red text here and outlined in black. This is located just south of Highway 42 or 145th Street, and just east of DCTC, which lies right here. And so this is located in that kind of southwest quadrant of Akron Avenue, running north and south here, and then County Road 42. The total area is about 435 acres, and it's roughly this area bounded here. I think this has been discussed before, but one of the questions that gets asked with this project is, you know, why is that boundary so odd, and why is, you know, why is it, why was that particular boundary chosen? And a lot of it has to do with the current leases that are in place between the University of Minnesota and the Dakota Aggregates large-scale mining facility. So this is really, the area that's outside of that mining facility is also able to be served with services, at least for that Phase One initial project. This particular location map does show two of the areas that are also currently within the city's Musa line that are available and being marketed for development, both the property immediately to the west of the DCTC campus, and then property that is being marketed by Opus further east of that. One thing, one of the things we talked about previously with the planning commission, and one of the actions that was taken by the city was to move forward with a significant amendment to the comprehensive plan to re-guide a large portion of this area from the previous designation, which called for a mix of single-family areas, which are the yellow colors here, moderate density residential, which are the tan colors here, and then high-density and commercial development, and really combine the single-family and medium-density areas into one larger mixed-use residential category. And this was intended to give future developers within Umore and this particular developer additional flexibility for determining where the best location for townhouses, single-family residences, and other unique products would go within this overall project. And I'll have a little bit of information about that mixed-use district, just as a refresher, but this was something, an approval that was granted by the city a few months before this proposal came forward. So this is what the future land use map looks like now. There are just a few little things here that I want to point out that will need to get updated, partly because this particular amendment has not officially gone through the approval process with the Met Council. It's actually in front of their community development committee tonight for action, and we'll be going to the council as a whole in a couple of weeks. And you'll note from some of the approvals, there are some conditions that condition the approval tonight on that approval going through. But again, that is being recommended by their community development committee, and that's a consent item, and there will likely not be any discussion on that moving forward, at least at the council level. So this map, the colors are a little different, but it shows you where that mixed-use residential area is in the kind of whitish, grayish color here. This shows you where the Musa boundaries are right now for the property, which, you know, follows roughly along that alignment of Boulder Trail, or the future alignment of Boulder Trail in the south part of the site. In terms of the development summary, Amber Fields, as proposed, would cover 435 acres. This is a pretty good chunk of the overall Umore property, which is around 3,000 acres within the city of Rosemount. Of that, 12 acres would be used for commercial uses, 29 acres would be devoted to high-density residential. There is a spot or location on the property for a public school site. In this case, the school district has expressed an interest in acquiring some land for a new elementary school. The remainder of the site then would be developed either a single-family or medium-density or townhouse-type lots. The other major feature of the project includes larger stormwater retention areas, a series of parks, trails, and open space throughout the project area, and then some of the larger road extensions that would come into the site, both with an extension of Akron Avenue serving as the major north-south alignment and Collector Road on the east side of the project, and some of the other roads that would tie into existing city streets north of Highway 42. This is a quick summary of the residential units that are proposed throughout the project area. I think the two numbers here that stand out the most would be the bottom number showing the total number of units at 1,964, based on the PUD plans that are submitted with the information tonight. That would be split between that mix of single-family, townhouse, and then the more multifamily apartment-type units. One note from the staff report that wasn't updated since we've had conversations with the developer about nailing down exactly what the lot dimensions and lot types would look like, you know, is that if you, as you look at the very, look at the very top of this table, the smallest lot width that's being proposed by the developer is 45 feet wide. And this is a fairly significant departure from the city's standard lot with requirement of 80 feet in our R1 zoning district, and what we've done in other PUD projects where the city has allowed down to 65, you know, 65, 60 feet width for lots. We do have some projects where there were, that were approved with a 50-foot wide lot, so this is not totally unprecedented, but the developer really feels there's a strong market right now for a narrower lot situation with options for either walkouts or slab-on-grade construction. So you'll see with some of the discussion on the PUD later, that does have some implications for some of the standards that the city has in place, and there's a request for some variation from those standards. As we get into some of the plans, you'll note one of the other major features of this project is that there is a fairly large amount of shared common open space, which is, again, somewhat different than other projects where a lot of that open space or ponding areas is retained by private lot owners. So this would be accessible for residents within the entire area, and it's one of the justifications through the PUD process for going down to some smaller lots. So basically, you're creating smaller lots, providing a little more open space throughout the entire project area that can be used by all residents and by the city as a whole. Going back to the mixed-use residential district, this is this new classification that was adopted within the past few months by the city, and this is, again, what's currently under review by the Met Council. That particular land use classification allows for two and a half to eight units per acre, allows for mixing the low-density and medium-density residential uses within that area, but as a planned development. It does specify a threshold of no more than 30% of the area can be guided for medium-density residential, and this is consistent with some of the previous zoning and guidance of the property. It does allow for flexibility across the larger project area, so as the developer tries to or attempts to respond to changing market conditions, it gives them a little more flexibility to go through a zoning amendment or a PUD amendment and then move forward with their project versus having to go through and amend the comprehensive plan every time there's a change like that. And then just note that there are specific areas within the PUD that will be zoned specifically for low-density residential or medium-density residential. When the city adopted the comprehensive plan change, there were no new zoning districts associated with that, and the intent was that the city would apply the existing zoning classifications that we have to the project site or future project sites that take advantage of that mixed-use zoning. So in terms of the site development plan, just a couple of quick updates here based on some of the recent planning commission meetings. The overall plan schedule includes a preliminary plat that would subdivide the property into outlots. And what this means is that the city, at this point, is not approving any specific lots for development, and that the developer would need to come back for each project phase with a new preliminary plat and final plat, along with final PUD development plans, basically providing a lot more detail before moving ahead with development within each of these project phases. But what this would do then is allow the developer to subdivide the property, split it off from the remainder of the Umore site, and then develop a final plat that would be all outlots that could then in turn be sold to, or developed, and then sold to individual builders to build on each lot within the project. There have been updated site plans that have been submitted fairly recently, which has included a tree preservation plan, updated stormwater plan, an overall master plan document, which includes a parks and open space exhibit, and then the actual outlot plat itself. And these were all plans that were submitted between the public hearings to give the city more information and to comply with the terms and requirements of our PUD ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The applicant also has given us a zoning amendment exhibit, that's in the packet tonight, and we'll have that up on the screen here. The other important, I think, element that's been updated since the initial planning commission review is that the developer did put together a ghost plat for the extreme southern part of the property. One of the changes that was made to the project after the initial submission was to shift the proposed alignment of Boulder Trails through this, through the Umore site. But by doing that, that moved it a little further south of this project and created a gap between the southern end of the property and the proposed future road. So the applicant has put together a sketch showing how those lots could be developed, and that, you know, more or less shows that it can work within the framework of the overall plan and providing the future connections that are necessary for adequate traffic flow. And as I mentioned, there's no buildable lots being created with this action. For the zoning, the PUD requires the establishment of base zoning, so all of Umore right now is zoned for agricultural research uses. The PUD would change that zoning classification for the uses that are proposed within the project. So that's a mix of our zoning, the city's zoning requirements of R1, R3, R4, C4, and PI. And I'll show you the map here that where those correspond to in just a minute. This is the overall set of plans you have in the packet. I think I'm gonna focus on this drawing, which highlights some of the open space areas of park areas, but also shows a view of the entire site. So again, just to get oriented, Highway 42 runs east and west on the north part of the property. Akron Avenue is running north and south here. And as you all probably know, Akron Avenue right now is not improved other than to the entrance into DCTC. So everything south on Akron Avenue is a private road, and it's a private improvement, so it's not available technically for use by the public at this point in time. So just to kind of highlight some of the features of the project, first of all, this is the 12-acre commercial area up here. So this would be, include a fairly significant-sized commercial area that would be intended to serve the local neighborhood, so it isn't quite big enough for a huge box, but would allow for some smaller stores that were intended to serve, again, the immediate neighborhood and some of the residential uses in the area, and possibly DCTC as well. The applicant does show kind of a mixed use here of having some potentially senior housing or apartments on the extreme western portion of the commercial area. This, again, would allow for some mixing between those uses and provide some synergy between a more intense residential use and that commercial space. Moving further to the east, this is across Abbey Field Avenue, which would connect up to, across from the existing Abbey Field and continue south, is the multifamily area. So this would include a mix of standard apartments and some other high-density townhouse-type products on the further east-western portion of that site. And then kind of looking at the area next to Highway 42, right here is where the existing Met Council Regional Interceptor is located, and the area around that would be devoted to stormwater ponding. Then as you move further south, there'd be a kind of east-west minor collector road connecting Akron Avenue with a future extension of Auburn Avenue. This would also come further south and continue through the project and eventually connect down here to the edge of the future alignment of Boulder Trail. So within the project itself and with the residential areas, I think this map really clearly illustrates that a major feature of the project is a large open space area that is devoted to predominantly the retention of stormwater, but does allow for a lot of opportunities for smaller park areas within the project. Then you can see the developer has proposed a plan to provide trail connections that would connect out and extend branch, basically branch out through the project and connect into some of the major collector roads that are running east and west. Same thing here in the south. And you have these little branches coming out with trail connections that would presumably in the future extend through these neighborhoods and then connect down to the regional east-west route. As you move through the area, looking over to the west, or I'm sorry, to the east, this is the area just south of Dakota Technical College. The developer is proposing a larger city-owned park area, and this would help count towards the overall park dedication requirements. The school site would be located further south on Akron Avenue, right here at the southern edge of the property, and does provide some opportunities for shared parks between the city and potential school district site, where there may be some shared facilities or the option for residents to use the school facilities. And then continuing to the east, on the extreme southern part and southeast part of the site would be an area devoted to single-family uses down here. And I mentioned briefly the Boulder Trail alignment. When this project was initially proposed, Boulder Trail tried to follow this alignment where the project boundary is, and so it swung up from its location down here at the southern edge up to a point up here. And as the city worked with the developer on that alignment, I think it was, it was determined that that created a significantly larger curvature of the road than was necessary, and brought that road much further north than what really was required for that connection east and west, and made less of a direct connection between Bacardi Avenue and Akron Avenue. So based on those conversations, that road has shifted further to the south. It does move it outside the project area, which is, you know, not ideal from the perspective of getting that road built in the short term, but I think our city staff and the developer also agree that, you know, long-term, this is really the best alignment for Boulder Trail, and so the idea is to plan for that best alignment versus trying to do something now to provide a connection into the project. The other kind of change and discussion the city's had with the developer that, you know, is one of the conditions of approval, is right now the boundary stops short of where this connection would come in off of Auburn Avenue. One of the conditions does require the developer and the University of Minnesota to dedicate that road for public use and build it as part of this project moving forward. So the specific condition requires the construction of this road with the project phasing that's been brought forward through the PUD process. So this would get built, and at the end of this project would extend down to this point. So there definitely needs to be some further discussions about making the connection to Boulder when that's done, and that would be done when this area to the south develops at some point in the future. But this should give the city a pretty good idea of what that development might look like and how those connections might be made in the future. And then this allows for, you know, really good spacing of those connections along Boulder Avenue, which would be more of a collector road, serving this neighborhood and then future neighborhoods and development around it. Moving on then through the plans, this is the proposed outlot plat. This would create, or the plat would create 21 outlots, so as you can see from this drawing, there are no specific lots being platted with this. This does show, and you can see barely, I think, through the screen here, how those lots may look and how they may be aligned with each project phase. But otherwise, right now, what the developer's requesting is an overall outlot plat that would allow them, the project, to move forward. The next steps beyond tonight, if it is approved by the council, would be the preparation of a final plat showing these outlots, but then a subdivision agreement that would really get into the details of the responsibility for the cost of constructing, at least the initial stages of the project, some of the masquerading that's necessary to get this project going, and then some of the road improvements that would take place with that project. And on that note, the next slide is the phasing plan that's been put together by the applicant, showing how the project may be phased. I think it's worth really stressing with their, with the way these plans have been brought forward, that this Phase One is part of a much larger project the developer would be masquerading and then putting in place early on in the project to really set the stage for those future phases and future development later. So you can see right with the plans, the boundary of the Phase One is this line right here. So Phase One does extend through that overall open space, stormwater ponding area, park area, and that would all get graded and put in place with those initial project phases. The developer's gone so far as to really request and we feel very, feel very strongly about building that amenity as part of the overall project at the start, to not only help with the marketing, but really help sell and create a nice space for the residents that live out here, but also wants to, you know, really work to build the park system with these initial project phases, so that that park system is in place, you know, at the very start of the project, and that we're not waiting, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the line, off of the city to come in and build those parks as those homes are built out. Otherwise, I think there's several conditions that relate back to Phase One and ensuring that the developer is putting the proper infrastructure in place for that Phase One. But with the overall masquerading, this Phase One project would include the construction of Auburn Avenue and then Akron Avenue down to this point, and then the construction of this major east-west road. And as you can see from looking at the phasing and the way the outlots and the various phases are set up, this really opens up a good portion of the site for development, allows the developer to begin going forward and building out each project, specific neighborhood and project phase. This is the overall grading plan. Not gonna spend a lot of time on that. I think a lot of this, this information shows up in some of the other plans, but you can see here, you know, how that grading would look and work with the open space and with the ponding areas. So you'd have a series of retention ponds running from the southeast part of the site up to the northwest part of the site, and this would all kind of function as infiltration, but also serve as some of the open space, where there's space to do some improvements at these nodes and areas where there isn't, where you're outside the stormwater pond elevations. And lastly, the last plan I think I have here is the landscape plan. This is really hard to see at the scale that's included in your packet and the information tonight, but it does illustrate that the developer is planning on, one, addressing the city's minimum requirements for landscaping for the individual project neighborhoods, and has calculated out those numbers based on the concepts that you see in front of you tonight, but also that there's a plan for a fairly extensive planting plan around these open space areas. And the developer stated during the planning commission review that their intent really is to provide nice screening for those, those public trail areas, provide some buffering from the neighborhoods and so forth, and really act as a nice amenity for this neighborhood to have in place early on in the project, so that these trees grow up and then can serve as an amenity for the neighborhood. The one thing I'll point out is, as part of our staff analysis, as you'll see later, the overall calculations, I think, have been done for the individual neighborhoods to meet the ordinance requirements, but the developer still is working out kind of what that looks like with the tree preservation and replacement plan. So the developer has gone through and done an accounting of all the trees that are on the site now, how many would be impacted by the development, and from that, there's a number that need to be replaced on the site. That accounting hasn't been completely done yet to mesh with the landscape plan, and so one of the conditions requires the developer to provide that accounting, so the city can verify that the number of trees going into these common open space areas, you know, above and beyond the individual lot plantings do indeed comply with that requirement. They've indicated that there should be more than, more than enough trees and more than the minimum requirement based on those tree preservation requirements, but we'll need to document that and have that as part of the record then, moving forward. This is just a blow-up showing one of the park areas, just as an illustration. The plan itself is over 150 pages long. I'm sure you don't want me to go through each and every one of those 150 pages tonight, but I thought this would be just to get a good example of showing what that plan looks like in terms of where the individual lots are. You see the individual requirements for trees planted on individual lots, and what those tree plantings might look like around the trail system here. And this also gives you a kind of a blow-up of what one of these park areas could look like as well. And the intent here isn't that you'd have one large park that would be accessible to all residents in the neighborhood, you'd have a series of parks that could be accessed through the trail system, so that, again, you're serving a lot of different needs potentially, you're giving a lot of different options for various park uses, and setting it up for the use of not just the residents, but others in the public that might be able to get out there and take advantage of these parks. This last exhibit I have is a map showing the zoning. So this would be the zoning exhibit that gets adopted. You'll note that one of the motions tonight is an ordinance that would establish the PUD zoning for the property. This follows the conventions, I think, that we use for our zoning map in terms of colors, but you'd have the commercial area up here, which would be in red. The dark brown would be the high-density residential. The oranges color or tan is the medium-density or moderate-density residential. Single-family areas are shown in the yellow, and then all of the green areas here would be the public institutional land use. That would include these common open areas, the trail connections, future city park on the east side of Akron Avenue, and then the school, the potential school district property down here. In terms of other kind of comments from staff, I don't want to spend a lot of time on these In terms of other kind of comments from staff, I don't want to spend a lot of time on these either, since these are documented in the staff report. The two kind of big ones right now, I think, that are still being discussed and worked through is the Stormwater Management Plan. That did come in with the second submission by the applicant, and so that is still currently under review by the city. That is something that needs to be formally approved by the city as part of the plans, and there's conditions that note that that review is, that the final review and final modifications to the plan are forthcoming. And I do want to note that the parks, trails, and open space overall plan did, did go through an initial review by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Parks Director has provided comments on that as well, but there's still some additional discussions needed between the city and the developer over the exact improvements to be made in the park system, and then the calculation to determine what the overall requirement is for dedication. The developer is arguing that the proposed plans with the dedication and with the improvements within the park, which will be done privately but then turned back to the city, are far in excess of what the city's minimum requirements would be just for park dedication. So, again, that's something that needs further review and consideration on the part of the city. For review comments that have come in since the planning commission meeting, we've had a few kind of commissions that have met either right before the planning commission or right after. One was the Dakota County Platte Commission. Dakota County Platte Commission comments, which we haven't received the official letter yet, but at least during the meeting noted that a commercial site access is one of their concerns. The county is concerned about the number of accesses that are shown off of Akron and specifically asking, accessing the commercial area. Their recommendation or their letter of comment is going to note that they would prefer to see one access into that commercial area only, which could be either three-quarters or right-in, right-out, and then the next access would be that major east-west road, which would be south of the commercial area. The developer has expressed concerns about being able to market the site with that restriction in place, and so the city has indicated that we'll continue to work with the county on determining what the appropriate plan for access is in that area. The developer has noted, and they've kind of mentioned this during, after the Platte Commission meeting, and they've talked about this before the planning commission meeting, that they do have some concerns about the marketability of that site without that access. And so, I think they've expressed concern that at some point, they would like to come back to the city and maybe request a PUD change if that site is not viable for commercial uses because of some of the access restrictions. But again, this is an issue that I think the city is, is working on with the county to try to determine, you know, what kind of solution may be available out there that meets the needs of both the commercial or future commercial users, the developer, and what the city's goals are for this particular area. And certainly understand that the city has spent some time recently doing some visioning for this corridor, expressing what the, you know, the vision is and what the desired uses are there, and so I think we're going to continue to work with the county to make sure we can bring that, that vision forward with, with the access and with the plans that are put in place here. The other issue that came up was Akron Avenue construction. There is a potential for the city to work with the county on designing and building a four-lane divided county road up to future county road specifications now with some contribution from the county. So, we will be pursuing that, although, you know, based on our initial conversations and discussions internally to date, you know, there really are two options. One is that the city builds it to city standards now, and then at some point in the future, the county comes back and redoes the road when they're ready to accept the road and move forward with improvements. The second option is to work with the county now to build it to those standards at this time with this initial project. There's, there's trade-offs and benefits of both ways. Either way, works with the county. I think the key issue there is that the county will not take over the road, and it has told, they've told us this, until such time that Akron Avenue connects between Highway 42 and Highway 40, Highway 42 and Highway 46. So, until that connection happens, the county doesn't have any interest in actually acquiring and moving forward with any projects or taking over that road. So, that's one of the things we're kind of working through and needs to be discussed a little further. Ultimately, there, there will be, you know, a solution that works for both the city, the developer, and the county. Then finally, there were some comments during that meeting about potential impact to city ballfields. The developer's engineers has since, you know, extended and done a drawing showing what the future county right-of-way would look like, going out to its full right-of-way requirement and right-of-way dedication requirement. And I have a map that shows what that looks like now. We can spend just a little bit of time on that. It does look like there will be minimal impacts based on the way that road looks and how close it comes to the ballfields. And again, I'll show that map in just a second here. Rosemont Parks and Recreation Commission did review the concept plan and did, or the PUD plans, and for the most part, expressed support for the plans that have been laid out by the developer. Again, I think what the Parks Commission's been asking for is more details before signing off on that plan. That would indicate, you know, what type of improvement specifically are going into each park area, materials being used, the cost, all those sorts of things. So, basically, an accounting there of what the developer's proposing, what those costs are, and whether or not they are indeed what the city would accept and want to see in those park areas. And there still needs to be some work done to calculate out those park dedication requirements. This would typically get done with a subdivision agreement, which wouldn't be done until a final plat, so I think we're on track to do that. It's just sometime before the city actually signs off on and approves a final plat for those outlots. There needs to be an accounting that should be included in any future development contracts. And then lastly, I think, at the developer's request, they have stressed that they really are looking for some flexibility within the project area for development, mostly in determining where the single-family and the moderate-density or townhouse-type products would go within the overall project area. They have indicated that they are trying to respond to current market conditions and put together a plan they think works, but they still want to stress they're looking for some flexibility there. So, the staff report notes that, you know, we're kind of noting that, that request from the developer, but that there still is a process that needs, that needs to be followed in order to accomplish that. And specifically, the developer can come forward and ask for amendments to the PUD and basically change the zoning map to move things around as, as they, as they see necessary or as the market maybe dictates in the future. And I think the city's indicated a willingness to work with the developer on doing that. By going through and doing the conference of plan amendment for the mixed-use development area, one of the things that I think we do help, the city does help the developer with is that it does not need to go back through the conference of plan process or amendment process if these changes are done because of the way the comp plan is set up right now, which means you're avoiding, you know, further action or further action necessary from the city and further discussions with the Matt Council about making those particular changes. So, I just want to point that out again, because it was something the developer felt really strongly about, and it's something that we wanted to at least comment on here before moving on with the project. This is that Akron Avenue exhibit. Again, just showing you that there's been some additional work since the Platte Commission meeting to really kind of more clearly illustrate, you know, what some of these impacts are going to be. So, this is showing you the project area, and this is rotated a little bit from north, but you can see Highway 42 up here and then Akron Avenue running north and south here. This is the DCTC campus, and that's the ballfield site here. So, the extreme southern line here is showing you that, that 75-foot off-center or overall 150-foot right-of-way. This shows you where it comes through, so there are some impacts to the city property because there's land that would be going into the county right-of-way. But the overall impacts, the ballfields are fairly minimal in that there's still, you know, a decent setback from the edge of the fence line here to that future right-of-way line. I think when the county first looked at this, there was some concern that that line would extend into the ballfield site and that there may need to be some, either shifting of the road or realignment to accommodate that. Again, the impacts seem to be limited just to this, this parking area here, where there, and I think there's a couple of spots where the edge of the parking encroaches slightly into that right-of-way area. So, again, I think the takeaway there is that while there may be some minor impacts, it doesn't look like there's going to be a major impact based on the alignment of the road or a need to really look at a future realignment of that road to make it work. This is one slide I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. There's a full discussion in the staff report regarding the PUD exceptions that are requested by the developer. I think this process and what's being requested is very similar to almost all of the newer residential subdivisions the city has, has done recently. The key differences, differences here is that there is a slightly smaller lot with being requested by this developer, which will offer these 45-foot lots within the single-family areas. The side yard setback would be typical of our residential subdivisions with five feet or 10 feet or seven-and-a-half foot side yard setbacks. There are a few places where the developer would be looking for five foot on both sides. This would be more for those kind of urban villa lots that would allow for, you know, some additional density with minimal yards and then potentially some either shared maintenance or other setups there that would allow for that smaller alignment. The maximum previous coverage is a little higher than what we would see in some of our other subdivisions. Most of our recently approved PUDs go from anywhere 35% to 45%. We've had a few at 50%. This pushes it up a little bit because of those 45-foot lots, but again, I think staff feels that with the additional open space and some of the things the developer's done to provide trail connections and shared open space between units, that this is acceptable in this location because overall the project still fits within that overall density once you factor in that open space. And then lastly, and I didn't spend a lot of time on this in the presentation, but one of the, one of the things the developer's requested is the ability to do some single-family rental within the project area. They're looking at that area just south of the commercial site as a potential location for single-family rental properties. And the way these would function is that they would be really, really, really narrow lots, so down to 30-foot wide lots, but then with some common open space around each of the units. So, it would still function and look very much like the other neighborhoods within the project, maybe at a slightly higher density to accommodate the rental units, but then they would be rented out individually and not owned. So, they provided some examples for the planning commission. Hopefully, maybe saw some of those examples during the course of the planning commission meeting. There's a few examples around. The developer will be happy, I'm sure, to share some examples and their idea for that area. But to do that, there are, there are some zoning variations needed because that area under the plan right now is guided or would be zoned for R3 or the moderate-density uses, and that zoning district doesn't allow single-family uses. So, one of the PUD exceptions would allow single-family uses within that R3 area, basically following the standards of the townhouse, for townhouse units within that area. So, that's what that's been set up, and again, we can talk about that a little more if there's questions, more specifically about that, that style or that proposal for that site. Otherwise, there's a series of conditions that go with this project. Again, I'm not going to spend time reading through each and every one of those. A lot of these really hinge on future approvals that are necessary or working with the developer between now and when a subdivision agreement is prepared to nail down some of the responsibility and costs for the, the project and firm up those development plans to comply with all city requirements. One of the things I do want to point out, because we did get a letter from, from Dakota Aggregates, is that the city is asking that developer put together a map that shows the mining area within Dakota Aggregates and the part of the site that's being leased by Dakota Aggregates in relation to the Umore property, and I think we've also asked for DCTC to be shown on there, just so we have that as an exhibit that can be entered into the public record for individuals that are looking to purchase within Amber Fields and know that, hey, this is some of the stuff that's going on in the area. And it's probably more critical here because there's such a long-term lease in place for the mining operation, and it's going to be there for a long time, and there is going to be a lot of houses out there ultimately in the future that, that live in fairly close proximity to the mining operation. However, as, as we've heard from other folks within the region, this is not uncommon for the South Metro, and there are many other communities near us and around us that are in a similar situation where they're actively developing in and around these active mining operations. So, I think that concludes the, the formal part of my presentation. I do want to note that there are four parts of the information or the requests that's in front of the council tonight. Number one is adopting an ordinance that would approve the zoning map amendments. Number two is adopting a resolution approving the preliminary plat, which would be the overall outlaw plat for Amber Fields. Number three would be adopting a resolution approving the PUD master development plan, so all the plans and documents you have in your packet tonight. Then lastly, staff is asking the council to approve a PUD master development plan that essentially establishes the overall PUD plan for the property, memorializes the inclusion of all the project plans as part of the PUD, and then lists out those various exceptions and so forth that are requested by the developer. So, with that, I think I will, will stop and take a breath, and weren't happy to answer questions from the council. And as I said, representatives, representatives of the developer are here tonight as well and can come up and, and share their thoughts on the project as well.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up council members for any questions you have. Steph, go ahead.
I've got a couple here. So, can you get back to the master plan? I guess this, this map's fine. So, the 45-foot wide lots, where are those at?
At this point, they would be mixed in throughout the project.
Okay, so there's, they're, they're not concentrated in any certain area.
Exactly.
It's across, it's, it's all across.
It's within kind of those single-family areas. They would likely be able to do a mix of those 45-foot wide lots, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong in stating that, but that's my understanding.
Is, is there any areas, I guess, that were more, there's more, there's more prevalence of the 45-foot?
Yes, I think if you look at this, I think their plan was to have these larger lots kind of ringing the, the open space area, and I think down here, there's some more prevalence of those, the wider lots. Otherwise, as you get closer to these townhouse areas and some of the roads, the, the east-west roads, you'd see more of those, those lots. And I would probably defer the applicant to maybe come up and explain more of those details if you'd like more information on that.
Yep, okay, I'll hold off and talk to, talk to them. The common areas, just, just for clarification, so what the developer's proposing is that the city would take over responsibility for the common areas, the parks, the trails, maintain and maintain those so that, that the entire community has access to the all common areas? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. Although, they've been very clear with us that they do intend to negotiate with us on getting some sort of easement or rights to be able to maintain the areas around the houses and, and around those neighborhoods. So, for these areas where the trails are coming next to the residential areas, my understanding is they would be seeking some sort of easement to basically, you know, provide responsibility for those homeowners or homeowner associations to maintain that, that open space. And again, developer can kind of talk about their, their expectations for that. Otherwise, you're correct that, just overall, the city would retain ownership of these, these common areas, which would allow them to be used for public parks and would be available for public use then.
Okay. And then on the access to the commercial area, the one access point that the county is, is pushing for, obviously, you guys, the developer would have concerns about that, what, I, I guess, from a staff perspective, what, what other development, recent developments in Dakota County would, would give favor to either the one access point or multiple access points?
I'm not sure if I can answer that question off the top of my head. I know when it was brought up, there was discussion about some of the larger big box, more recent big box developments, like the Menards down on, on 42 and, and things like that, but those are much larger sites, and so there's a little more ability to space out those access openings, to provide for those, those turning movements. So, you know, I think that was kind of the model the county, the county was looking for based on our conversations, and I think we're right now as staff trying to find some of those examples where there are smaller, more neighborhood-oriented commercial centers that really need that access in order to function.
Yeah, because it doesn't, by, by looking at their, their, their vision here, it doesn't appear that it's going to be a big box retail there. It's going to be multiple smaller, smaller businesses.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay. And let's see if I thought I had one more, but I might just wait and talk to the developer. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions about Akron Avenue. Looking at this map here, can you point out where construction would end based on Phase 1?
Yeah, so, I can spend a little more time on that. So, first of all, as you know, there's a project underway right now to signalize Akron Avenue. That project does include the initial leg going into and heading south into the Amber Fields. So, right now, the county would be extending or building Akron Avenue to this point, and this roughly aligns with the current entrance into DCTC off of Akron Avenue. The developer now then would be required to build Akron Avenue from this point to this point, which would be the east-west route into the project area. I don't have the exact dimensions of how long that would be, but this is roughly a quarter mile down here into the project site, so it's probably an additional, you know, 700, 800 feet that the developer will be building with that Phase 1. Everything south of that would be later, would be built presumably by the city at some point in the future when it's, it's required and when it's needed to be built. So, this is one of the discussions we're having with the developer right now, is how we, you know, how we collect from the developer their fair share for the cost of that, that improvement, that future improvement, but allowing it to, the project to move forward now without holding it up until that's, that's built. And the city has done that in some other projects, including the area just north of here with Akron Avenue and Conamere and some other things going on in Preswick, where, you know, the developer basically, or the developers for each project phase are contributing towards those overall road networks. Now, in that situation, that was done and agreed to privately, but we have other examples where the city's required that as, as part of a, a project where there was a major road that needs to be built to serve one or more project areas.
So, essentially, access to this area will be from County Road 42 only, not County Road 46 to begin with?
That is correct, yes.
And there's no concern about that?
I mean, there will be at some point in the future, but for this particular project, I'm going to go back to kind of the overall map, just to show, so this is where that alignment of Boulder comes through, and this is kind of the edge of the, the project area down here. So, you can see from that, we're still at least a quarter mile from 46, and this is And this is crossing land that's owned by the university. There may be some issues with the long-term mining lease arrangements. So I don't think the city, you know, has any clear idea when that might be able to go through. And that is one area where there may be further discussions with the county about the need to put that in sooner than later. But for now, I think as we've looked at this and looked at how the overall traffic pattern works, by having access on Akron here and Auburn over here and with this east-west collector, that should provide sufficient access, you know, in the short term, at least for this project phase and future, some of the future project phases beyond it. So again, I just want to stress that the first phase will include Auburn Avenue, this east-west road, and then Akron Avenue. So there would be two connection points into the project area. When this area develops, this connection will be made between the commercial and multifamily area. And then it's the same discussion with Boulder Trail. At some point, the city believes that this will also be necessary to help support and move traffic through the project area. If nothing else, provide an outlet for these southern areas to come back and then get back to a major road. So again, you know, maybe it's, it definitely isn't, I don't want to try to get a number on it. I would try to put a number on it. I mean, at some point, that is going to be necessary, but I think for this particular project phase, what we're hearing from the folks that have looked at it, including the county, our engineers and others, is that this project can stand alone on its own, provided that Akron Avenue is built at some point in the future with either phase two or we're definitely well in advance of phase three improvements.
Okay. And then the minor collector roads that you pointed out, will there be sidewalks on both sides of those minor collector roads?
Yes, and I think there's a trail on the one side, although I probably need to look at the project plans a little more closely. At a minimum, there would be two sidewalks, yes.
And then you had mentioned earlier in the presentation that we have recently approved fifty-feet-wide lots. Can you remind me again what neighborhoods that was, just for reference point?
That was Carimore Crossing.
Okay.
If you may recall, they had two different product types, and I'm drawing a blank on who was fifty or fifty-five foot wide, but they were narrower than what our typical PUD lot was.
And then my last question for you is you mentioned rental homes. So of the nineteen-hundred-and-sixty-four units, do we have an estimated number of, what number would be rental homes? Or when you look at that table you had, are you breaking it down? Are the rental homes within the three rows up on top, or do they fall below on like multifamily? Where do they fit in, I guess?
My understanding is right now they fall in the townhouse area, because right now the way that zoning works, it'd be guided for townhouses. And I don't know, I can't remember what the number was based on our conversation.
Okay. And you know, when I look at this table, just for the viewers looking at home, what is the definition of multifamily? We have, we have single-family, townhomes, apartments, but what does multifamily mean outside of those other categories definitions?
Well, I think the zoning definition would be anytime you have more than one unit being built on a property. Whereas at townhomes, you have individual units being built on each property. You could have eight townhouse units that are all on their individual properties that are connected. So it's a much larger, you know, it's a larger building. Multifamily implies that you have multiple units being, you know, accessed via one entrance and one building. If that clears it up at all. So anytime there's more than three units on one lot, it's considered multifamily versus the townhome situation where you have individual units on individual lots, even though you might have eight, nine, ten of them together in one building.
So they're really townhomes that are accessed through one entryway?
In a way, yes.
Okay.
And the multifamily generally indicates that there's multiple stories too that you're accessing and not just, you know, side-by-side units.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Just a follow-up to the first question on trail system and the open area, green space, et cetera. Regardless of the ownership of the trails, the city would be owning the catch basins and the land where stormwater accumulates, et cetera, correct?
That is correct. And that really isn't much different than other subdivisions. The only difference here is that that's all contained within one larger area, whereas in some other subdivisions, you'll see stormwater ponds, then they get eaten up by the lots or there's easements, but the city still has control over those or maintenance responsibility for those ponds that act as retention for the entire neighborhood or for regional purposes.
But by having it all here in a central location owned by the city, it would solve a lot of long-term problems when you have to clear some sediment out or et cetera, et cetera.
I think that's been one of the pitches for this concept is that it does provide you some opportunities to not only have that in one location to make maintenance hopefully a little easier in the future, but then provides that amenity for the entire neighborhood versus having these ponds scattered throughout the project area. Plus, I think if you look at the project site and topography, it works just, it works really well with the topography where this is a low area that runs kind of again from that southeast, the northwest corner of the site. And so it follows more or less some of the natural topography as well.
And then along that line, the parks that will be built here at these various nodes. When will we see details on those, as a phase comes forward?
I think with the phase one improvements or with that initial subdivision agreement, again, I could be speaking out of turn here and the developer might have some different perspectives on that. But I think relatively soon because the developer wants to receive some credits and know what those credits are going to be moving forward. And to get to that point, as our parks director has told us and the Parks Commission, they need to see the details to know what we're getting. So I certainly don't want to overpromise here in terms of what the timing might be, but I think the idea is that it'd be fairly quick turnaround because these are improvements that the developer wants to install with their initial project phases. And again, they've said, I think, at least three or four of these park areas they'd like to have in place and set up, you know, when these first homes come online.
Any other questions? Is there a need to have the developer come forward if you would please?
Ask a couple of questions of the developer, if I could?
Right, yeah.
So welcome, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. I appreciate that welcome, I should say. My name is Mario Couturel. I'm the owner of Maplewood Development Company, a real estate development and construction company here in Minneapolis. I guess I'll take the questions first if you want to start.
Sure, sure. Well, thanks for giving us some time. I guess what I'd like to, you know, obviously, we're generally pretty excited about finally getting something. I think when I moved here in two thousand and four, it was, it was, the talk was way back then, so seventeen years later, something seems to be moving on this.
Well, we're excited too, so.
So I guess if you could, maybe tell, talk to us a little bit about, you know, the brand, the character of, you know, you bringing two thousand units into Rosemount. What's the brand or character you envision of the development?
Well, first, let me say that I think we're a little bit of a unique company in that besides Maplewood Development, I own Bell Air Site Work Services, which is, we're a national earthwork and utility company. So we're building the lots. This is not going to get done by anybody else, and that includes the park areas and all the rest of it. So we'll be intimately involved in every aspect of this. There might be an outlot or two that will sell off. Certainly, the commercial might work that way. But generally speaking, we're building the lots and selling retail lots. So a little bit different for a small developer. I think, you know, our vision of this, it kind of goes back to our concept planning that we did with you all those months ago. And the idea was to really, first of all, create some diversity in housing, try to really create something different. You have a great city here with a great school district, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of desire to be here. It's a funny thing, isn't it? I mean, years ago, I think I would have thought of Rosemount, it was just a little bit too far south. You know, it's just a little bit too far out there. But now, after what's happened with development in this city and the access that you have on two sides there from seventy-seven and now with fifty-two and fifty-five on the other side, this is in the heart of where people want to be. And the school district's such a huge draw because you have such a great school district here. After that, we had a little bit of a different idea after we grabbed the new land plan and said, what do we want to do with this? And if I may, you know, I think a couple of the big changes, there was a roadway area that was around the pond, and that might have been a good drive, but I don't think it would have been a good use for residents. I think our uses now will allow not just the people in this area to use the parks, but also people from the outside. So, you know, we've included parking areas at two different locations here, plus the big park areas. Plus here, there's a proposal, there's a, the topography lends itself to a tunnel here. So you should be able to get on the trail and really never have to cross the street. And I think that's a terrific thing. Again, I'm going to show my age. I've been doing this for forty years now, but, you know, it used to be we built trails and everybody went, what are we doing that for? Now, it's probably the biggest amenity that we put together. I mean, I can't believe the people that use the trail system. And that's really the biggest amenity even beyond the park, frankly. But the idea here was, I don't know, Kyle, do we have the parks plan that we had at one point on the thumb drive? If we don't, that's, oh, okay. Let me maybe answer some other questions that you had while he's doing.
Yeah, one detail question, you know, kind of the same question I asked of Kyle. On the access point, because you've got the, obviously, the access coming off of forty-two and then if I recall, I don't have it up here, but there's three access points coming off of Akron into the commercial area?
Yep.
What are, how confident are you that you can, again, you know, looking at from other precedents that Dakota County has done more recently, how confident are you that you'll be able to get to your desired layout there?
Yeah, on the commercial site?
Yeah.
You know, we sell a lot of commercial sites. You know, gas convenience is very difficult without direct access these days. The truth is, is that this, this commercial area is really a neighborhood commercial. And that's a lot different than if we had a regional area here that encompassed thirty acres or something and had an access down here. That wouldn't be a problem. We do not have a regional site here. It's just not that kind of a commercial site. So when you have a commercial site, you need some access in here, and typically, it would be a full access right here lined up with the entrance to Dakota County. Look, we're going to try really hard. It's, we haven't set up to do this. There's a lot more money in commercial than there is in anything else. I mean, you know, but I think what you don't want here is a commercial site with small boxes, and what you end up with is, you know, the hair salon and the nail lady and that kind of thing. And that's not, it's not viable for the long term. It just isn't going to work. So our only request in here, and I think Kyle put it very succinctly in the narrative, is let's go at it for three or five years or something like that. See what we can do. Let's see what kind of use we have, and if we can't get it to fit, then I think we have to revert back to some kind of multifamily apartment or something like that.
That was the question, is if you're not successful in getting the access that you're looking for, what is your plan B?
Well, I think we'll try. I think, you know, there, could there be a gas convenience or a Walgreens or somebody like that? Once the houses, once the rooftops are in here, that would look at it and have a different opinion, maybe think outside the box, maybe. But, you know, twelve acres is a lot of commercial.
Yeah.
That's not a small commercial site, so maybe it ends up being five acres. Maybe that's a better use.
Okay.
So that's just trying to be completely transparent. Maybe a couple of answers, though, to your questions. You asked about the forty-five foot wide lots.
Yep.
What we had planned with our initial discussions with the builders, Outlots F, G, and H might very well go forty-fives and fifty-fives. The forty-fives would only be the interiors. The fifty-fives would be everything on the perimeter that would be walkouts. So those would require a little bit larger footprint. It's a very specific plan. They're small lots, single-family. It's frankly, that is the market right now. That's what people can afford in this crazy kind of market where we priced everybody out unfortunately. So there's that. We don't really have any other plans for forty-fives and fifty-fives in here.
Okay.
That most of the rest of it is not standard townhouses, but I would say more conventional. Down here, we're looking at larger lot, but there may be some mix in here on K. And I'll also make another comment, and that is, based on the pretty strong interest we have for the site, phase one might extend further down into this area than what we showed you. I think we cut it off in here, but I think we're going to end up going back down to here in the first phase. Another question came up about how do things get maintained? We have a profile for the trail system that we'd like to try, and that profile is here. I don't want to build a trail system that is just a bunch of weeds on either side and a small trail with no bench and, you know, nothing going on in it. So what we're trying to do is create a flat area around the entirety of the, of the big pond, if you want to call it that. There'd be a thirty-two-foot-wide sort of what we're calling a green hallway here. And you'd have a wide enough trail, but then you'd have grass with plantings. And the way we would handle that in terms of maintenance, because frankly, we haven't seen a city so far that's very good at the maintenance part of it or the public works that wants to do it. So what we would do is build that, and then let's say Outlot G, they would irrigate and take care of the maintenance for that section of the trail. And we'd allocate that by outlot, and it would be formed right into their association agreement, and there'd be a master maintenance agreement. That's how we'd try to handle it. And that way, we sort of take that off of the neck of your public works guy. This is, it is hard. It's hard to maintain. But I think that, I think it can work, and especially with the national home builders who want to be in here, they know how to make this work. They'll make this happen. So there's that.
Sounds like a good chance for our brand-new public works director.
Yeah. The parks, we're very proud that we've got, we think, a very unique plan. I don't think I've seen this anywhere. And I'm going to just scroll into a couple of these, but you see that there's these, you've probably heard this at the planning commission meeting if you watch it, there's five or six different smaller nodes within the park area that are, you know, semi-private, but they're available to public. And those would include some areas where, for instance, and if you look at E here, we'd be putting in a bridge here, just as a feature. It doesn't have to be running water. It's just a place for people to congregate. There's some, you know, little kiosks here to tell you where you're at. This is going to be a very large area. Drinking fountains, a little bit of detail here on one of those. These can change a little bit. You know, B would be more of an active park perhaps, where you could stop on the trail and, you know, bring kids and that kind of thing. So, you know, I'm not going to go through all this like I did at planning commission, but I will say that I think we've got some different ideas. We'd love to work with your parks folks, like to encourage them to think a little bit outside the box and try to do something really unique along the trail system. I think it has a chance to be spectacular. I really do. Let's see, and then there were some questions. I don't know, should I stop there just for a minute, just to see if you had any questions about the parks?
I'm good on my questions anyway.
Just curious, so Amberfields, where do you intend to have the main entrance? And or do you intend to have multiple monumentation or a couple of different sites here?
Yeah, I think the monumentation will probably take place at several of these nodes along the way. So I don't know if there was one here that showed all the nodes, but certainly A would be one of them. But I think we'd have them at, certainly F and A, no question about it, at those entrances.
So for the road monuments, would that main entrance or is there multiple main entrances into the development itself?
Well, I think, I think both Auburn and Akron are going to act as, you know, entrance points.
Primary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I did want to answer the question Ms. Fresky brought up about, you know, our construction here of this. I just, I would just want to remind everybody that Dakota County didn't bring in any services for us here. So we're going to go back up here. We have to grab the sanitary and the water main from this side and drag that down. We'll do that in our right-of-way, so we don't have to mess up anything they've done. And that will be outside of, you know, the future. If they ever go to a four lane on this site, I have a really difficult time seeing that, but maybe, maybe that'll happen. Clark, we didn't have anything that would conflict with the four lane as far as we're bringing the sanitary through, did we?
No, it's out of the way.
Maybe some other points that we just wanted to make, and then I'll shut up and you can. Well, I do think the way we're doing this with an outlot plat is the way to do it. We've done several now of these master plan projects just in the last couple of years. How Kyle has this set up with the outlot plat and then having us come back to you, I think, is the way to do this so you can see the vertical construction and then make your decisions along that line. I do think that you'll see a great variety of housing, but we've, you know, we're just into a couple of big sites right now. Just finished a big site up in Maple Grove at Southwest Crossings with the big high V there and about a thousand units of housing. We finished a big one in Woodbury with about seven hundred units there. And then, of course, the Imation site, the three M site in Oakdale, Lake Elmo, there is going to be over fourteen hundred units. So I think we're, we're seeing similarities between this site and those, and we're taking, I'd like to thank some of the best aspects of those and really marrying into what you have here is a great site. One other thing, everybody keeps asking about when we're going to get started, so I'll just answer that one out front. You know, we've got a couple of rary, difficult things to solve with you here, Akron at the top of it and the parks thing. So, you know, if we can get through a master development agreement and get to that, the good news about this one is the soil conditions are such that I could start this thing in December and we could, we could go. And we're planning to do that. So if we can just get that part together, we were hoping to start in October here, but I think what's more likely, it's going to take us a little longer. But even if we started in November, we'd like to start grading and take this part of the site north of the spine road and at least get that all done in here and get it graded. And then we can continue on to the south of that as we've got suitors for, you know, all this stuff that you see around the spine road here. Maybe lastly, the, just remember, this is just a concept right now, and I know you're maybe expecting some big deviation. I will say this, the market is such right now and the players we have for this is the builders, I don't anticipate a whole lot different than what you're seeing here on this first phase. I mean, we've got that kind of working through and locking that in and coming back with plans right now that mirror this. Could that change on the south end a little bit? I think so. But I think by and large, what we've shown here is, is pretty close. And by the way, that's been our experience with the other master plans I just told you about. Once we kind of set it out there and show them what we're thinking, the builders kind of tend to follow in and say, okay, you know, that's, I get what you're trying to do there, so, for what it's worth. As, with that, I guess I'll just stand for questions if you have anything else.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just, just had one comment. I really, you know, after the initial discussions and things we had in this front area or the middle area from the storm and just creating that whole environment around there, I like the features in the park and all that stuff, the things that you had talked about, they're on the plans and you're showing them here. Really, I think this Really, I think this brings a premier development to Rosemount, so I appreciate following through on what you had initially promised upfront to us.
Thank you. You deserve it. It's a great city. We're really lucky to have this one. I don't know what happened with the previous one, but...
Happy to have you.
Yes, thank you. So if there are no further questions, comments, would anyone like to move motion? Go ahead.
Start the first motion to adopt an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to rezone 435 and a half acres from AGR Agricultural Research to R1 PUD, low-density residential PUD, R3 PUD, moderate-density residential PUD, R4 PUD for high resident, high-density residential PUD, and PI PUD, public-institutional PUD, and C4 PUD, general-commercial PUD, subject to approval of the Amber Fields slash U-MUR comprehensive plan amendment by the Metropolitan Council.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Weisensel, a second Councilmember Essler. Any comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Drostie.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0.
For the other council members?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary plat, Outlot plat for Amber Fields, subject to conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Essler, second, Councilmember Fresky. Any final comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Essler.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Drostie.
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a planned unit development, PUD, master development plan for Amber Fields with the rezoning of the property from AGR Agricultural Research to R1 PUD, low-density residential PUD, R3 PUD, moderate-density residential PUD, R4 PUD, high-density residential PUD, PI PUD, public-institutional PUD, and C4 PUD, general-commercial PUD, subject to conditions.
Second. We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Block, second, Councilmember Essler. Any questions? Final comments? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Fresky.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Drostie.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0.
I'll make a motion to approve the planned unit development, master development plan agreement for Amber Fields and authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into the agreement.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Fresky, second, Councilmember Weisensel. Any questions or final comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Drostie.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0, and that concludes all items before. Want to say best wishes, we'll be seeing you. You're going to make one other comment? Yes.
I just want to say, with Kyle leaving, thanks for all the great work that he did for us on this. He was extremely capable. You're losing a really good one there, and we see a lot of them in a lot of different cities. Kyle did a great job for us.
That's very kind of you to say, and I would also say that compliment fits very well.
Thank you.
So with that, that concludes this item, and we'll now move on to announcements, and I'll turn over to Mr. Martin.
Thank you, members of the council. Just a couple of staff updates tonight, and Mario referenced Kyle's departure, I'll get to that in a moment here, but wanted to welcome Nick Edgar today. Nick, it's Nick's first day today, and so he's been through it all and drinking from the fire hose, as he said, but he's very capable and going to be a great member of our team as our new public works director, so wanted to welcome Nick. And then I just, from a staff perspective and, and my role, Kyle, I just wanted to thank you so much for your service. Kyle's taken a wonderful career opportunity in the city of Red Wing, he's going to do great work for his hometown of Red Wing. And I just sat here, cut, you know, and watched Kyle, that was a, you know, PhD-level planning or, you know, presentation he just gave, and the amount of, the list is too long from a long meeting here, but our comprehensive plan, shepherded by Kyle, gigantic project like this, shepherded by Kyle. Your legacy is strong here, it's not going to go away, and we want to just wish you well, and thank you for your service. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to work here. I really enjoyed my, my time here, and I'm going to miss working in Rosemount and working with everybody, the team that we have. I tell you, you're in great hands with Adam, and you guys are going to do great things, so I'm looking forward to seeing all this great stuff happen, and we'll be up here visiting soon. Thank you.
I want to say also thank you, and I apologize to our city attorney, not having any questions this evening, but the quality of your presentation dictates the questions.
Well, when you have such great people like Kyle handling these kinds of projects, you don't really need me.
So with that upcoming on city calendar, the technology task force meets on Wednesday, September 8th, beginning at 6:30 PM. As mentioned earlier, the food truck festival on Saturday, September 18th, beginning at 5:00 PM, and it's scheduled through 10:00 PM. The Parks and Recreation Commission meets on Monday, September 20th, beginning at 7:00 PM.